Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order. It is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, since you haven't been doing much lately, do you have any minutes or reports received and filed?
I do. I have the Recorder's July 2024 fees, the County Clerk's July 2024 fees, and the Auditor's July 2024 Revenue and Expenditure Report.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a solid way to manage my district board meeting tomorrow, regional economic partnership meeting tomorrow, and then I think there's a chief's meeting Thursday night.
We're buying dinner.
And we're buying dinner.
What are we having?
That's weed.
Uh, Tuwanda's Franchi.
Uh, Chamber of Commerce Friday, coffee. Blue Tiger Athletic Club Casino Night Saturday night. I think that's about it.
Not much on my calendar today. After this meeting, I'll meet with Judge Beedham and others about the construction manager at risk for the new juvenile center. Thursday morning is the City Public Works meeting and Eastern District Commissioner has already mentioned the casino fundraiser for Lincoln U on Saturday evening.
Yeah, I have those. I do have something on my calendar. Friday is, I think Larry Vincent's birthday. Is that right?
Rumor has it.
This Friday?
Happy Birthday.
So, well, happy birthday in advance.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And then Monday, I've got a meeting at the Health Department at eight, so otherwise I've got all the other, the same as what Jeff has. Any Commission comments? Okay, we will go on to bids and contracts. Signing of the fiscal year 25 Highway Safety Grant Award for DWI.
Yes, so I have the contract here for the DWI grant. It's for $6,000.
Did you get a promotion or demotion? Have to come up here and present this today.
No, sure. I found out this morning.
Short story.
Much better looking than that other guy that does this stuff.
I appreciate that.
I thought that she was going to be.
She was gonna be, but apparently ended up on that bus too.
Back the bus I know for you, so. Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the FY25 Highway Safety Grant DWI Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of fiscal year 25 Highway Safety Grant Award for HMV.
Yes, I have that one here as well. And it's for $34.50.
Okay, make a motion to sign FY25 Highway Safety Grant Award HMV.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We got one more.
Is that the signing of SFY 2024 American Rescue Plan Act?
Correct. It's for five.
State and local fiscal recovery fund, first responder capital improvements, and interoperable communications equipment grant award.
Correct. It's for five mobile radio. And there's several places to sign, and then initials also.
Okay, very good. This is how it goes when you're just asking for us to approve money coming in, Chief.
Okay.
Just for clarification. Okay, you seem good. Okay, make a motion to sign SFY 2024 American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, first responder, capital improvements, and interoperable communications equipment grant award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should've let you do that one.
I got all kinds of stuff signed off the longer.
Yeah, that one's got some other pages to initial too.
Okay. Approval and signing of the sub-award agreement for the EMS CIIIEG grant.
So we were also awarded a
Good morning.
Good morning. We were also awarded a state ARPA and recovery grant for interoperable communications. The grant award amount is $274,469.89. Of that, we were required a 50% match. However, if you remember back to the grant approval, that grant or that match was able to be made through in-kind match. So the purchase of the vehicles in which this equipment's being placed on is our match, so there is no additional funds required to come out of the budget to obtain the $274,000. So this will replace all of our legacy radio infrastructure, you know, that we've been buying a few radios every year to the tune of about $30,000 every budget, but this will take care of the rest of that in one fell swoop. So super appreciative to have this and be funded. Happy to answer any questions.
274 total, and then half, 137.
Uh, so, so actually, the total project amount I misspoke was 548,939. So they're paying for 274, which is half, and then our match is the 274.
Gotcha. I was just, didn't remember if you said that or not, so yeah, that's a huge one. Thank you.
And actually, Eric, when we spent the money that we previously, I have already spent, we didn't do it to get this match, but it, but it fits.
Yes, it did fit, yes. It was a creative way, I think, for the state to leverage local funds to match, and you know, I'm not sure that they've ever done an in-kind match before, but I thought it was pretty clever, and it seems to work out. Seems to have been a nice windfall for all the agencies involved, so.
Good show.
Great.
Good show.
So sub-award agreements, if you guys could vote on that.
We'll let Harry do one. That's a bigger one there.
And then you do have your initial.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the sub-award agreement for the EMS CIIIEG grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I get, I get the initial too.
Yeah, there should be three signatures and initial every major.
Okay. Okay. So. Do you have something else?
Uh, I haven't checked the.
I mean, right now, we, you know, we've got unfinished business.
Yep.
But I know we're coming back to you in new business.
Yep, I just didn't know where I stood on that.
Okay. Do we, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business. Accounts payable review.
Approval of accounts payable pending review. And I think, Harry, you know, you have one.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable upon review.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Okay. First reading of budget adjustment number seven.
This is for $11,750. This is the county clerk, first reading of this budget or budget adjustment. It's for have a grant, so I'll bring it back up in 15 days, for 10 days, I should say.
Okay, discussion of employee benefits for upcoming 2025 budget year.
Okay. Well, me and Sheila have been working on different benefits as far as what maybe we can offer to new employees coming in, existing employees. I know it's been hard for some departments to hire people, you know, so we decided it was time to look at our benefit structure and compare that to the city and the state. So we had three different emails that went to you guys about potential changes to some of our benefits and new benefits. I'll just go over them quickly. I'm not asking for approval today. I'm just asking you guys to think about these items and with the budget officer too. We first looked at retirement, you know. State has MOSRs, the city has loggers. We here at the county have both, loggers and SURF, which is nice. SURF is statutorily set up. There's really no changing to that unless you go down to the legislation and try to change something with that. So then we looked at loggers. Loggers, we've had since 1968, believe it or not, here at Cole County. So it's a nice retirement that we've always had, and I think SURF was added in 94 for county people. So loggers, you can add different functions. You can add AD and out. You can all-acart it however you want. There's different things you can add to your plan. So we looked at two things. One is basically changing the, in the calculation, right now we have a five-year lookback on the highest salaries, and they look at five years. You could change that to a three-year, and that is beneficial to everybody if you only look at three years versus averaging it over five years. So the cost of that, because you'd have to capture employees now and all the years that they've had before.
Debbie, when did you email that to us? I'm sorry. I was trying to find it. I thought that.
This one was on June 26th.
Okay. I know it was a while back, but I wasn't getting back that far. I was trying to follow you along. Thanks.
And so to change that to a three-year lookback instead of a five, the cost to amortize that over the next 20 years was $640,000 a year additional. So neither one of these options are, they're expensive, but it does benefit, and our goal was to benefit the majority of the people here. It does benefit basically anybody who stayed five years or more. And the other option we looked at was going from a one and a half percent plan to a 1.75% plan. That cost was almost exactly the same. It was about $600,000. And again, that would be amortized over the next 20 years. So those are just options for you guys to look at. If you got any questions about those or anything.
I don't want to get too much into weeds now, but i-if, if a employer goes from 1.5% to 1.75,
Yes.
I can see how somebody who retires the next year use the 1.75 multiplier. What happens to the previous retirees? Do they bump?
No, they're not included.
Okay.
And it is quite the process, so you have to, through loggers, you have to let your employees know at least six months ahead of time that you're changing that, giving them the opportunity to not get out, you know. Maybe they should wait until the change is effective.
Right.
So it's quite the process if you change that, but it's only for the ones going forward after you enact it that would have that benefit.
And the state government at 1.5 at this point?
State government MOSRs, they have a different little calculation in how they do it. It's not exactly how loggers is set up. I mean, we did look at the cities. The cities is at a 2% plan. I did run those figures a couple years ago on the 2% plan, and it was way over a million additional.
A year.
A year.
Right.
So, so then we just looked at the 1.75 this time.
And there's his loggers as well?
There's his loggers. But knowing we had two, we thought we'd compare very reasonably to their two.
Right.
As far as the benefit package goes. And to me, a benefit package is the whole thing, not picking and choosing certain things and trying to match that, because, you know, here at the county, we're lucky, even at the state level, anybody hired after a certain date has to pay the 4%
Right.
To their MOSR's plan. Here, nobody has to pay, as far as that goes, for either retirement.
And the MOSR's plan that we have has a five-year vesting?
Yes, loggers does, yep.
And the SURF is a?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're very nice retirement plans, and they, I think most employees appreciate it. As far as that goes, the younger ones, we're trying to get into in the next couple benefits here, as far as we want to attract people to come, and so it becomes important that we look at that angle too, you know, not just people that have definitely stayed with us at least five years and enjoy these retirements at some point. Okay, the second option we were discussing was short-term and long-term disabilities. They come with, you can all-acart those two as far as what kind of benefits you want to choose or not choose. Here at the county, we've never had short-term or long-term.
So that wasn't on the email anywhere, was it?
That's on the email from July 24th.
All right, thanks.
And when I say we haven't had that here, the employees had the opportunity to buy AFLAC here, and that has the short-term disability within it. So they could have done that, but I know it's never popular to pay for it out of your own check, so we looked at short-term and long-term disability, be it the county paying it. And so that was kind of the email breakdown that I had given you. Me and Sheila are recommending, this is not really catering to one particular need. I mean, the company would handle the short-term decisions as far as whether it was maternity leave, whether it was got hurt off duty, whether it was, you know, I just started and I don't have time. It's the company's decision on what, what qualifies for it. So we were looking at the short-term. If the county paid for it on a yearly basis, it would be about $77,000, the one we were looking at. That's a fixed cost. You know what it's gonna be, you know. It does help the ones that have not had a chance to build up their sick time, if that helps, in thinking about it. But we can also have Wall Street come, and they did get these quotes for us based on our salaries that we have now, based on the amount of people we have, and I'm not sure they looked at the age, but they do have.
That's true. So if it's not used, then will that amount roll over?
No, that's just a fully insured plan. You pay that yearly. It's, it's done. It's a benefit for the employees. So in the long-term, you could do long-term on top of the short-term. I don't think long-term's needed here at the county, because that's what our sick leave is for, and we don't have a limit on our sick leave, so I think you're generous that way. So I think when me and Sheila looked at it, we were just concentrating on the short-term part of this. The long-term would be another probably $80,000 a year. But we're just recommending the short-term. So, and we can have them come and talk to us about what it all covers, if you guys are interested.
Our competitors, the city, the state, do they have either one of those?
The city has long-term. They don't have short-term. The state, I'm not sure if we looked at that or not.
I don't recall, I don't recall them having that.
And then third one that we talked about, which was August 1st email, was we looked at the accrued leave for vacation, sick, and we compared to the city, the OA, and conservation, where we fell, because I, I think that's been brought up a couple times. There was a few department heads thinking maybe we were not quite with the state, but as far as our benefits are concerned, as far as accruing leave. I sent you this spreadsheet. I don't know if you've seen it. As far as the vacation and sick, basically, we, we match up with the state and conservation, other, on vacation, other than they get to have more leave to carry over from year to year than we do. We've always cut it off at 240, and the state does let them increase their carryover a little bit more than we've ever done. But as far as the city, they are a little bit more generous in this area than we are, but we do feel like the only thing we would change there is the people that are from zero to two years, increase them from 96 hours that they can earn for vacation to the 120. So we're recommending in our schedule, we're proposing for 25, the year 2025, to change that for an additional 24 hours of vacation.
Back to the sick leave for a minute.
Okay.
The accumulated sick leave upon retirement.
Yes.
How much of that is paid out? Is there a 10% number or something?
Yeah, if you've been here 10 years or longer, you'll get 10%, and then it caps at 20% for anybody over 20 years is still 20%. The city does start in their category at five years, and they go to 22. Their schedule is kind of like ours, but we don't start till you've been here at least 10 years. The state and conservation, for every month they earn, or they have in their bank, basically, that can go towards their years of service, then it's figured in their calculations for retirement. So that's a great benefit too, that they have. So people are incentivizing in government to keep people at work, you know, not, not to use up your sick. So, and on the earning of the time, we feel like we're right in line with the state as far as the 10 hours a month that people earn. So the only change we're asking for there is the zero to two-year employees to increase their vacation. So that, again, I'm not looking for an answer today, unless you're wanting to give an answer today, but, but that is not really something budgetary that would, you know, it's more time off for different departments that they have to fill, obviously.
And it goes without saying that this does not apply to elected officials.
Absolutely, no.
Correct.
They don't accumulate, so.
Elected officials do not accumulate vacation, sick leave, or get a, get a pop when they leave after X number of years.
That's right.
We're only talking about the rank-and-file employees.
That's right.
Debbie, did you consider raising the maximum accumulation to be in line with the state too? Because that, it goes up when you hit the 10-year mark, and then it goes up again when you hit the 15-year mark. I've, just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I think that's something you could consider too.
I mean, yes, you can, you can consider that. I mean, the city went to a flat amount too, but they did increase it to 320. We're at 240. It does increase the liability as far as, you know.
Yeah, we can have more leave for anyone who's been here 10 years or 15 years when they.
If it's accrued and not used.
Well, yeah.
If they use it, if they use it as a accrue, it doesn't matter.
So, yeah, I mean, definitely, you can, you can look at it. Private sector, you don't see this kind of stuff, so it's hard to compare that to anybody else but government.
Yeah, we talked about this. I don't, I just don't see people leaving us because of our benefits packages aren't good enough, or coming here because we've got a great benefits package. I mean, that's how we try to sell it, that, hey, we're not gonna pay you as much, but we've got a great benefits package. And a lot of times, the people that we're trying to get, trying to get some youth in here, that's not what they're looking for. So I, I mean, I think it's worth considering, but if we're gonna spend more money on something, I think I'd rather pay it in salaries and say, hey, let's throw it at that and try to get them here. I don't know that, it just might be the, an old man thinking or something here, but I just, that's where I'm leaning at as far as the salaries, rather than trying to throw it at the disability. I know the disability thing was maybe, instead of the maternity, possibly an option, but.
It would be all-inclusive on the disability instead of the few that are in childbearing age.
Correct, yeah.
And that was our goal.
And that was 75,000?
Yes.
Something like that, so it's.
And then that's a known cost versus an unknown, where you're, you know, you, you throw that open, and again, it was to not be exclusive, you know.
Debbie, can, do you have this, can you can furnish us with the statistics on our employee universe, how they utilize the deferral of, like, you know, pulling bucks off to the deferred account?
Oh, as far, oh, how many of our employees participate in the additional
Right.
Deferred Comp program?
Yes, and, and maybe on the young side, if they did have a raise, but they rolled it to the, to the deferral, their taxable income doesn't increase, but their retirement income is building.
A lot of the young ones do understand the deferral more than a defined benefit retirement.
Right.
Because they come from, you know, that private world, or, you know, that, that's where they want to invest their money. But a lot of them also think they can get to it when they can want, need it. I'm like, okay, now this is a retirement, you know, you don't really want to get in it. But yes, because of the match money that the SURF Retirement Board has, is still matching, which is kind of a, getting to be a rarity that, you know, anybody's matching that anymore. It, it is, we do encourage people to get into that if they can afford to, you know, even a little bit.
Can you give us the stats on how many, not by name, of course, but
Yeah, sure, I can give you those stats.
What our university, universe of employees are using it?
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. The other thing I'll just make mention, and why we looked at loggers, there is one department here that they are not eligible for SURF. They're only in the loggers program, so, and that would be the juvenile, so.
Right.
So.
And that's statutory?
Yes, there's nothing, yes. Nothing anybody can do about that. And, and I appreciate Sheila. She comes from that private world and looking at some of these benefits, so. And we'll take anybody's suggestion, you know, but we, we want to, unfortunately, that younger group has not decided that benefits are that important yet. They will.
Until they need them.
They're gonna be working a lot longer, I think.
Well, they're gonna pay for housing right now, childcare.
Yep.
Everything else costs more right now, so, I mean, the last thing they're worried about is 40, 50 years from now. I mean, I know I was too. I was out there, it's like, hey, I need some play money and pay for bills.
I do think the county has good benefits, so I think we compare very nicely. And I'll let Sheila, sorry, I did all the talking. If you want to have anything to say, but we've worked on this.
You know, the only thing that, that I would add to it is, is the parental leave you all put in as a stopgap through the end of the year, and then you'll have to make a consideration as to whether or not that will continue under a different form. The Care Leave Committee agreed to just that small window getting us through the end of the year. I will tell you, when I ran stats for utilization, easily 70% of those that were asking about care leave are the men, the fathers of the children to be born, which are not covered under the provision that you all put in place. By doing the short-term disability, it is a known factor. We're gonna know how much time is available to them upfront. It doesn't have to go to a vote and then be revisited after 30 days. It will be a known factor, and it will be inclusive of that 70% that have applied for that parental leave benefit that, that we've had to tell no to. Another factor in looking at the sick leave increase, the, I mean, the vacation accrual increase, it will impact minimally, I think. Larry can talk to this, about how much is contributed to the care leave each year, but historically, most people don't contribute the hours they're gonna lose anyway on vacation. This would allow them to keep a little more. The care leave has a hefty balance right now. If we continue parental leave out of the care leave, that's gonna diminish that, and so that would be a double whammy. So increase in the accruals on the vacation side would allow people to have a little more as that stopgap as well, waiting for short-term to kick in. So it, it is not looking at apples to apples exactly, but it does give us more options to include more employees in the, in the county that would benefit by a benefit.
Being the short-term.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, and if there's any other thing you guys want us to look at, you know, we'll be happy to, and we'll bring these back up if you guys want to entertain the way it is.
Another benefit that is going on, our quick care is up and running out at the Health Department, so, you know, our employees can use it, their families can use it, their spouses, you know. It's so, go out and use it if, you know, if you've got a sore throat or you want to get tested for COVID, or if you've got anything. We have a nurse practitioner out there, so it, it's available for our employees, and that's, that's, it really is a good benefit.
And once we get the renewal for next year's insurance and stuff, maybe we'll push it during open enrollment step two.
Do we have a, a date set for a meeting with our carrier?
Yes.
We do?
It's the 21st. We had a conflict going on, wasn't it, the 21st of this month?
I think G4 wanted to add something as well?
Sure.
I guess if you're interested in comments from the peanut gallery today.
Absolutely.
So, so just a perspective from, from my seat, if we're, if we're talking about recruiting and retention, I'll tell you the number one thing that comes across my desk that we have conversations about is, is loggers and the, the match or the, the rate of return. So taking that to 1.75 is something that is highly desirable among my folks. It's something that is often asked about anytime we try and get anybody with experience. A lot of public safety agencies are at 1.75 or higher, so for them to lateral and take a 0.25% hit on their retirement becomes a big gap to bridge. I know it's, it's a hefty I know it's a hefty investment, but I would also say it's the investment that is most likely to result in retention for the long term. You know, if it's the upfront cost that is the issue, that upfront cost is minimized if that person only stays here for a year or two. It starts getting expensive when they stay here for a long period of time. But I think we can all agree that that's what we want to happen. The other comment that I have is that just if we're doing, if we're looking at short-term disability or the vacation things, I would just also encourage you to, for agencies that have constant staffing, those do result in downstream increases in salary line, paying overtime, some of those sorts of things. So there is another hidden cost in there. Obviously, we want people to take off the time that they need to heal, and we want them to be paid for it. But the more incentive they have to return to work, obviously, the better it is in the county's interest for them to come back as soon as possible. So I know the sheriff shares similar thoughts on the retirement plan. I know that we've had conversations about the loggers and the contribution piece. So I would just encourage and request that we look at that significantly.
And again, that total cost that I gave you is shared amongst all funds.
Yes.
Anything else?
Discussion of paramedic signing incentive.
So relevant to the conversation that we just had, we did have a sudden increase in vacancies amongst our paramedics here over the last 35 days or so. And to date, we had had one paramedic applicant for the calendar year 2024. So that signals to me that there is a little trouble in paradise and that, you know, there needs to be some conversations about why we're not getting people in the door. We started looking at salaries and doing some of that stuff, and, you know, I'm really hesitant to do anything mid-year. But we quickly learned that something needed to be done to return us to a level of sustainable staffing and not burn people out. The easiest thing to do was to convert. We had a senior employee leave us who was at the top of the pay scale, actually off the top of the pay scale, which would then reset that position to the entry-level salary line, which freed up a significant chunk of money. So we had a conversation with each of you about leveraging some of that unused funds for a signing incentive. We did go to market and were able to sign a paramedic who has about 20 years of experience, probably more clinically skilled than me, thanks to this sign-on bonus. So I do have his pay form today and just wanted to ask that we formalize that offer to him. The bonus would be in exchange for a two-year commitment to our organization, repayable if he doesn't complete it.
We don't like the word "bonus."
Sorry, incentive.
Yes.
Half of it would be the first year, and then the other half would be the second year?
He is requested it all upfront, which it doesn't really burn me either way because he is going to sign the agreement, so, you know, I don't think our risk changes.
Is it prorated then if he leaves then six months or a year and six months, or?
I guess that's up to you. I believe we have agreements that say it both ways.
We've done some of these before, how do we have those worded, do you remember?
Some of them, especially if it's not a huge amount of money, all of it's due if you don't stay an required number of years. But then there's some others, it just depends on how the officer or department everyone is structured. Other ones are prorated.
I would probably try to keep it uniform unless there's a reason to have it different.
Well, I mean, like the sheriff, for instance, this is how he wants to do it. The departments, you can decide. I mean, some of these, for instance, I guess it's the Peace Officer Academy. What is that, Joe, about 12,000 or something?
If you go to the academy, it's around 6,000.
Okay, and I think that is prorated.
I would say.
Your CDL, isn't that all 3,000?
Yeah, and it's not prorated, it's full amount.
It's full amount.
So we already have a hodgepodge?
Yeah, so, so I will say our internal policy, when we send somebody to paramedic school, it is prorated year by year for them to return the funds for whatever they don't complete. So if you would like it uniform within our organization, prorated would be the standard that we have now.
Well, it's Jeff, it's kind of based on how much it is.
I could see having a different, but not different per department.
Sure.
Once the department has, it's all are prorated, that's the way it is for that department. And other departments might say it's all, another one might say it's prorated. It may be hard to have a uniform across all departments.
Well, it's already different.
Well, I know, but it is different. But it's even more complicated if a department has options.
Well, and Harry, what the sheriff chooses to do, he can do.
Well, he can't break the law, you're right. Well, maybe in his case he can because he's packing, so.
So you said the paramedic school is prorated?
Yes.
And so then you're thinking, prorate this as well?
I would.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think my suggestion would be $3,000 a year. If he wants it all upfront, that's fine, but prorate it $3,000 per year for the two-year commitment seems cleanest to me unless you have another suggestion.
Easy.
That's good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, and, you know, I appreciate this. This was a solve, a short-term problem, so that we did not go back to the well and talk about salaries mid-year. So I appreciate you all working with us to close this gap. We were able to bring two other employees onboard, but they were not eligible because they do not come with experience. So we, thanks to the push and some of the things and conversations that started, we were able to recruit. And if everybody shows up for their first day, we'll be back up to full speed, so much appreciated.
Okay.
Good.
I don't know if we need a motion, if they all just sign the pay form.
No, I'd like the contract to be signed, so.
Yep.
Are you working on that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll work on that. He hasn't started yet, so is signing the pay form good enough, or do they need a motion?
I, it doesn't hurt to make a motion.
So when you go have the contract?
He starts on the 18th, so I'm working on that now. I haven't signed it that day.
Sign the contract next week, because he, next week's 14th, right?
Yep.
We can make a motion to approve the contract upon review of council.
Second.
Okay, motion made.
All in favor?
Aye. Because then you can sign it whenever we're going to have to.
I'll just put it under.
Have another meeting for it?
I'll just put it under own business.
We have a meeting about having meetings?
Yes.
Thanks.
But don't sit down. Next, we have approval of EMS logistics equipment purchase.
I mean to make this the EMS meeting today. So this is a little off-track, but I promise it's all relevant. It's just going to take me a minute to get there. So this is a request to purchase a commercial shrink wrap machine. And to walk you through why we need this piece of equipment, currently, all of our medical equipment sits in the cabinets of the ambulance. And it kind of sits free in its own individual packaging. And that really is a little bit problematic because it requires our folks to count every item to make sure that our inventory is correct. They also have to restock that item after every call that they run. Otherwise, our entire inventory system gets out of swing. It's very labor-intensive and probably one of the least popular aspects of the job that they do. So we've gone to put our heads together and tried to come up with a system that is a little bit less invasive on the folks who run calls every day. And this is something that I've seen in other stops, is called a bin system. So basically, you group your medical equipment and supplies into bins. Those bins are then shrink-wrapped and placed into the truck. The bins are designed to get the crew through their 48-hour shift with all the supplies that they need. So no more restocking after every call. What this does is the oncoming crew now doesn't have to worry about counting every single supply in their ambulance. They just look at the bins, and any bins that are open, they take them to central supply. They drop off the used bin, and they grab a new full bin off the shelf, and off they go. Supplies now take a matter of minutes instead of, you know, several hours to do. It's also important, you know, in the middle of the night, we don't know when our calls happen. If we have a really high-level call where they empty out a large majority of the things that we carry, they could be there at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning getting supplies, needles, you know, count by count. In this scenario, they just drop the bins that are used. They pull new bins off the shelf, and they're back on their way to getting rest and being back in service. But the key to this was getting a shrink wrap machine that allowed us to actually wrap the bins effectively. We went down to Arkansas and looked at the agency in Little Rock who's doing something very similar. We were pointed to U.S. Packaging and Wrapping, which is also based just outside of Little Rock. And they are the agency that provides their shrink wrapper. We engaged them in some conversations. The initial conversations were quite shocking. The commercial shrink wrapper is about $18,000 to $20,000 new off the shelf. However, we went in search of a good bargain, and we were able to find a demo model that was maybe scratched and had a couple dents and was not appropriate for commercial sale. So they are willing to cut us a deal on that and sell us that unit for $9,250. With that, we would need two rolls of shrink wrap to get us started. So the total price today is $9,668.66. There was some money built into a project in capital this year that can fund a portion of this. Maybe a small portion of it needs to come out of contingency just depending on how capital ends up at the end of the year. I know it's quite a wild ride, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We've visited about this before, right?
Yes.
And is it accurate to say there's probably only one other county in Missouri that has a commission that would ever talk about this?
Correct.
Because where there's only two of us that have ambulances?
Everybody, everybody else is ran by, is a district for or a division of local government. So, yeah, I mean, ambulance boards would probably be the ones who would be handling this conversation.
You know, based on what you say, it's really a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I think because of the way that your crews could come in exhausted and still have to do all this counting and restocking and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, I will say that on average, they spend about the first two hours of their shift when they come on duty counting and inventorying their ambulance. And then it goes, and they have a supply cabinet at their station, which also has an inventory and account. So that's counted once a week and takes several hours to do. And that basically eliminates that whole process. So not only does it give us a quicker way to move through our daily processes, it also gives us much tighter control over our supply inventory and eliminates a lot of the dead space that we have in our operation.
And you've got other people that are doing the supplies, so you're not paying a paramedic or EMT to be sitting around doing that because we talked about somebody's still got to fill it.
Yep.
So that's, there's some savings realized there, too.
So, you know, we have a budget line set aside for part-time. So we sat down and we tried to figure out what was the most effective way to get this done. And what we ended up doing is we actually have three high school students who come in after school and work in our supply room part-time and fill supplies and do all of that work with us. They've been doing that outside of the bin system right now, and it's been really effective, and our folks really seem to enjoy it. One of those high school students has now transitioned into an EMT class. So it's a good way for us to start getting people in the door at a young age and hopefully builds a recruiting platform for us.
So how many bins do we have made up in each station?
Yeah, so it's hard to say and reallocate all the bins and move everything around. It's going to be quite a significant system just because not only will you need bins for seven or eight ambulances, but then you'd also need all the bins in reserve. And so the good news is we'll be able to repurpose a lot of that stuff and get it up and running pretty quickly. So I don't know what the total bin count is, but it's going to be impressive.
No, I think it's good.
$9,668.66.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and it's just a quote, just to prove it.
Now, Chief, a few years ago for United Way, we duct taped the Eastern Commissioner to the pillar out front, and everybody threw water blends. Could we shrink wrap him to a pillar? We'd pay, we would pay for the.
Deal, though, if it doesn't work out, I get the food saver, I mean, the shrink wrap for Deer Camp, okay? I'll go back to Deer Camp.
So we could probably, we could probably use a roll of the shrink wrapper to accomplish what you're looking for. However, I do not think it is tenable to put a human inside the shrink wrap machine. I don't think that would be advisable.
Hey, he wants to get tased, I mean. Not a lot of difference.
I'll make a motion to approve the EMS logistics equipment purchase shrink wrap machine, dented and scratched, for a price of $9,668.66.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it is under warranty?
Yes.
I asked him, he said it's a scratch and dent. It still has the same warranty, he said yes, so, very good. Okay, we're done with your show, Chief.
Yes.
Approval to purchase stream credits for Wildwood Drive's stream mitigation.
So we received our permits for the Wildwood Drive project about a week ago. And as part of our duty with the permits, we have to purchase stream credits from a mitigation bank for the stream mitigation that we are doing on the project. And it works out that we need to purchase 1,320 credits. The cheapest we found was Missouri Conservation Heritage Foundation at $33 a credit for a grand total of $43,560. And I am asking for approval to make this purchase so we can push forward with the project.
And this is for a tributary of the tributary of the tributary of the tributary of the Missouri River or something like that, right?
We'll go with that, yeah.
Okay. We're going way upstream now.
We're on the Wears Creek, the upper limits of the Wears Creek. We're on a tributary of a tributary to the Wears Creek. So, but again, this is requirements from the Corps of Engineers in order for us to fully implement our permits, so.
1320 times $33?
Yes, sir.
And that, and that?
$43,560.
$43,560. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the steam credits, stream credits for Wildwood, stream mitigation at a cost of $43,560.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, y'all.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, should we breeze through that? Do we have anything else to come up with?
No, we're going to meet with Architects, we, I'll meet with what, Architects Alliance? I think Judge Beadham needs to be notified. We're going to talk about the six responses to the construction manager at risk for the juvenile facility, correct? Okay. But having said that, I'll make a motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.